Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Why don't we welcome everybody to the November 19th, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. And tonight, we're very blessed to have Roseanne Hall for the Mount of Prayer and Church of God to lead us in our opening prayer. And then Captain Jane Jones from the Fire Department to lead us in our place of allegiance. So those who will enable, please stand.
Father, thank you for the many blessings that we all have experienced. And thank you, Father, for being with us tonight. Lord, we live in a great nation and in a great county. And we're blessed that we have so many wonderful people who help us make the decisions to keep it that way. And Father, thank you for each person who participates tonight. We are blessed to hear their story and who they're about. And Father, bless each and every one of our police and firefighters, all of our public safety people that keep this county the way that we'd like it to be. And Father, thank you for the blessings you've provided. We ask that you bless us tonight. We ask this in your son's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and just as for all. All right, thank you both. All right, we, first of all, it's really great to see everybody here. Clearly, we're going to need a bigger building. We'll put that on the next class list.
It is.
It is. The first presentation goes to Commissioner Rock. Actually, the first two presentations go to Commissioner Rock.
All right, so come on, Dickerson Band. I think we have a little prelude music. Come on down. Come up here. Well, all right, yeah, come on. Kids.
He was going to try to pull some music, but we don't have it right now. We don't have it yet.
We're working on the music. Hey, Kim, this is more than...
Wow. Don't you steal my chair.
All right, so where's the principal and the band director? Need to be up here, too. So Adam Hill is the principal. And the assistant band director and percussion director is Scott Brown. You guys raise your hand. All right, so I'm going to read from the certificate I have here. And I'm back here behind all these really tall middle school people. No jokes from you back there. So this is a certificate of achievement presented to the Dickerson Middle School Percussion Ensemble. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates the Dickerson Middle School Percussion Ensemble for being recognized as a winner of the Percussive Arts Society International Percussion Ensemble Competition. That's a lot of words. The Dickerson Percussion Ensemble is the only middle school percussion ensemble in the nation to have received invitations to perform for each of the three major invitational performance opportunities, including Music for All National Percussion Festival, the Midwest International Band and Orchestra Clinic, and Passaic. I'm going to let these guys tell you what it is. We are proud of the school's tradition of excellence. This 19th Day of November, 2019, signed by the board. And I'm going to hand this over to Scott and let you tell you a little bit about these guys while I get their certificates.
These guys have been working for months to prepare for the concert. It was actually this past Saturday, and they gave a performance in Indianapolis, Indiana. And it was extremely well-received, and they did an absolutely amazing job. I think they were pretty excited, had a great time. And we certainly appreciate this recognition for the students because they have worked extremely hard for it.
Now, you want to come help me here? All right, so we've got a couple piles here. So if I call your name, you're on the list that I thought was going to be here. And then if I don't call your name, I've got to find you on the other pile. So the first one is for Aiden Allen. Okay, we're off to a good start. Owen Collins. This must be the ones that weren't coming. All right, let's go down here. All right. Benjamin Simmons. Now, we're on a roll. You better give me those ones back.
Yes, sir. I'll go through them. Sam here?
Lola Fajana. Ah, here we go. Here's the music. Got it? This is really high-tech over here. All right, let's give them a round of applause. All right, Spencer Leith. Addison Ongaro. Did I get it close? Grant Charle. I know he's here. Abigail Bondock. One for everybody. Agosta. Am I going to try the last one? And last but not least, Ilana Whitcomb. Everybody get one? Everybody got one? Oh, we missed one, just in the pile. We got it here, Matthew. And Matthew Song. All right, everybody, you've got to get a little bit closer in the middle here together for the picture. You can kind of stand in more than one row. Don't worry, girls, you're just on TV. So this ought to tell you a little bit about Sonny before I read the proclamation. The folks you have up here are family, friends, members of the Friends v. East Cobb Park. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the great things that Sonny did. So I have a proclamation here that says, "Whereas Sonny Lynn McPhee was born on January 17th, 1948, in Calhoun, Georgia, and spent her youth on naval air stations around the country. She was a proud University of Georgia graduate and married her high school sweetheart, Alan Walker, in 1972. They made their home in East Cobb where they raised two children, Andrew and Anna Rose. And whereas Sonny was an artist and an interior designer with a great sense of style. She was also the co-owner of Frameworks Gallery, a family-owned and operated business that has been serving the fine art and custom framing needs of metro Atlanta since 1974. Through her business, she supported East Cobb schools, churches, synagogues, civic organizations, youth athletics, and charitable causes through countless art programs, donations, ads, and fundraising events. And whereas Sonny was honored as East Cobb Citizen of the Year in 1993 for her outstanding community service efforts. In 1998, she was the visionary and a founding board member of Friends for East Cobb Park, a nonprofit organization with the mission of developing a passive park in East Cobb. Sonny served as president and worked diligently to help secure land, helped raise more than a million dollars to purchase the land, and helped develop the park's master plan. And whereas East Cobb Park opened in 2003 and is considered a crown jewel of the community, to recognize her tireless efforts, a piano named Sonny was permanently placed in the park for all to enjoy. In 2018, Cobb County purchased 29 acres of adjoining land and future plans to expand the park. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby thank Sonny Walker for her vision, passion, dedication, and love for her community and East Cobb Park. The first bridge connecting the two park properties will be named in honor of Sonny Lynn Walker. This, the 19th Day of November, 2019." I got two copies. So you want to... Are you the spokesperson?
Well, I am now. Well, we're honored, and I just want to thank Kim Paris and Mary Karis and everyone here who, you know, helped make this happen. We're just... We're honored and we're thrilled.
Why don't you tell us who some of the people are?
Oh, goodness. I'm going to let Anna Rose.
Okay. All right. Hi, everyone. Anna Rose Washer. I am Sonny's daughter. My family here, my husband Joel, my oldest, Evelyn, Graham, and Emma, and then my brother...
You can introduce your family. Adeline, she's nine. Our son Conlon's not here today. My wife Lisa, Joel, my Aunt Diane, Uncle Lance, Aunt Jean, Cousin Wade, Mary Karis, Davis Port, Abby Port, Kim Paris, Sharon Mason, we have Patty Mosley, Jean and Laurel Kovach, we have Mick Migdall and Reenie Migdall, and Tom Bills and Leo Neil. So thank you all for being here, and thank you, every one of you, for your support. We're very grateful.
Okay, you guys saw the drill. Squeeze in. Yeah, why don't we put the family and the kids in the front and the Friends v. East If I could get the representatives of the Cobb County Coalition of Small Business to Okay, we have a proclamation tonight for a very special day in Cobb County towards the end of the month. Whereas Cobb County celebrates local small businesses and the contributions they make to our community by creating jobs and boosting the economy. Whereas from 2000 to 2018, small businesses were responsible for nearly 64.9% of net new jobs created, and small businesses also employ 47.3% of U.S. employees in the private sector. And whereas Small Business Saturday is held after Thanksgiving as one of the busiest shopping times of the year. This day is supported by advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the county. Whereas 96% of consumers who shop at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with family or friends. The most reported reason for shopping to these businesses was support their community. And whereas in 2018, U.S. consumers reported spending a record high of an estimated $17.8 billion at independent retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday, and my wife was representing 1% of that amount. Now, therefore... Oops, she's here. Now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 30th, 2019, as Small Business Saturday in Cobb County, and urge all residents to support small businesses and merchants on this day throughout the year, given this 19th Day of November, 2019, signed by all members of the Board of Permission. Congratulations. And so who would like to speak for the group? Susan, it's all yours.
Many of us here are very pleased and proud to be part of Cobb County and be a part of the businesses in our area. Obviously, we would love for you to come out and support all of the businesses, especially the small businesses in Cobb County, and keep this county continuing to roll.
I'm Nick Dixon with the Smyrna Business Association.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jim Harris with Money Concepts and the president of the East Cobb Business Association.
Hello, I'm Roseanne Hall, and I'm a past president of the East Cobb Business Association, and I am one of the chairs of the Coalition.
And I'm Susan Hampton, also representing the Cobb County Coalition of Business Associations.
Good evening. My name is Butch Carter. I'm the owner of Honest One Auto Care.
Good afternoon. My name is Delphine LaGroon. I'm an agent-owner with American Family Insurance and president of South Cobb Business Association.
Good evening. My name is Donna Shaw. I am an associate broker with RE/MAX Premier, and I am the 2020 president of the South Cobb Business Association, trying to follow in her footsteps.
My name is Liddy Brown. I'm the president of Speed Pro Marietta, and I am past president of East Cobb Business Association.
Hi, I'm Jay Street. I'm in the IT business. I am current president of Northeast Cobb Business Association.
Good evening. I'm Sharon Mason. I am the president and CEO of the Cobb Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, everybody. Dana Johnson, I'm the executive director of Select Cobb, part of the Cobb Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, everyone.
And now Commissioner Gabriel has the presentation.
And I would like to invite the Harrison High School Boys Cross Country Team up, please. The Hoyas won at the GHSA Cross Country State Championships. They were led by Sully Shelton, who was the individual state champion with a time of 161141. The team consists of nine boys, Sully Shelton, sorry about that, who was the individual state champion, all-state selection, Atlanta Track Club All-Metro Team.
All right.
Noah Conley was seventh at state. He was the all-state selection Atlanta Track Club All-Metro Team. Caden McVeigh was ninth at state and all-state selection. Brian Boyle was 12th at state. Matthew Wyman, 24th. Mark Rabinscraft, 26th. James Boyle was 28th. And Andrew Cole and William Lane were alternates. The head coaches are Kent Simmons and Jason Scott. So it was with great honor from the Cobb County Board of Commissioners to present you with a certificate of recognition. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you and the Harrison High School Boys Cross Country Team on winning the Class 6A 2019 Georgia High School Association Cross Country State Championships, the first state championship title for the team. Your contributions to the team helped make this monumentous occasion possible. Your commitment to excellence is applauded, and we wish you the best as you continue your academic and athletic career. Signed, this 19th Day of November, 2019, by the board. Coach Simmons, would you like to say a few words?
Just thank you for recognizing us, and I just want to also recognize that these are really good kids in the classroom as well. They're very fine students, and they represent the idea of a student-athlete, so we want to recognize them as well for that. Thank you.
James Boyle. Mark Rabinscraft. Matthew Wyman. Brian Boyle. Caden McVeigh. Sully Shelton. Noah Conley. And Coach Jason Scott, who isn't here with us. Coach Kent Simmons. And one for the team. Thank you. If you could show me for a picture.
All right, great picture. Yes, nice.
And Mr. Chairman, if you could join... And Mr. Chairman, if you could join me down front, please. This is not on the agenda. Last Wednesday, I had the pleasure of attending the Zion Keepers ribbon cutting, and you were unable to join us. And the Zion Keepers presented you a special recognition. In special recognition to honor Chairman Mike Boyce for your years of loyal and dedicated military service and work in our community, presented by Zion Keepers two thousand and nineteen.
I'm honored. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're looking forward to this.
Good evening. If I can have the students and teachers and other administration who joined me for tonight's reception on anti-bullying, join me up front, please. Any sponsors, organizers, thank you. Bring those posters, too. We want to see your artwork.
Absolutely.
If you had a certificate, bring it up, please. I don't bite. Somebody can join me over here. There you go. All right. Very good. It's my honor and privilege to recognize those who are here before you. This is my second year of holding an anti-bullying contest, and I must say, this year, my heart was so full to see the level of participation that we received across Cobb County schools. And I was touched by the level of participation and just sheer thoughtfulness and creativity by our students. And tonight is a night, not for me just to recognize them, but to honor them for being leaders in their schools. Bullying is described in many different ways. It can be described as an imbalance of power that can be shown in a repetitive and somewhat of a dangerous aggression. Bullying can have lasting impact on people, and we've talked about different forms of bullying. It could be physical. It could be verbal. It could be cyberbullying or via email. It could also be social, through exclusion. It could come in various forms, and it can have a negative impact on people and their ability to perform. And we recognize this disparate impact among youth, but we also talked amongst the adults that this is not just a youth phenomenon, that we see this take place on the workplace and in our communities. And this is something that we really want to make sure that we get a grip on as early as possible, and these students and the support around them have shown us that we're doing that. October was Anti-Bullying Month, and there are some stats that we've come to recognize with how prevalent this is in our environment, particularly in schools. About thirty percent of youth admit to bullying someone, one in three. Thirty-three percent of kids who are bullied receive the abuse at school. Seventy percent of students have witnessed bullying. This basically means the entire school is being impacted by bullying. And so while it may seem difficult to stand up and say something about it, the reality is, everybody's seeing it, and we just need a few brave, maybe more than a few brave men and women to do something about it. So we talked about if you see something, say something, because more than likely, everybody's seeing it, but it takes a lot to come out and say something about it, and you guys did that. You guys saw something in yourself to participate in this, and you said something about it through your essays and through your artwork and through the video that we're going to have a chance to see here tonight. Recognizing and preventing bullying is key to eliminating it, and this contest is just one way of recognizing that, and I'm so grateful for the participation of the schools. I shared something a bit personal, and I didn't know how much to touch people, so I'll share here, that my parents are not from this country, and I grew up in Metro Detroit where there was really not a significant West Indian population. And so some of the things that we did at home were really unique for our family, and we had some experiences going to school and being in a new cultural environment, and in sharing that with our parents, they just had no understanding of it. And really, with them acclimating to a new country, their priority was on working and providing the best future that they could for their children. And I have personally seen how growing through that experience has fortified me to be who I am today, where I just, I have no tolerance of it with my children when I see it, when I see people in the community being regarded a certain way. It is something that I address, and I think it helps to make me the advocate that I am today. And so when I look at these children, I don't just see leaders in schools, I see leaders in your communities. I see leaders wherever you go, because you're taking a stand today, and I am just curious to see how you are going to share these experiences to help support those around you and make it a better place to be. So my heartfelt thank you goes out to the students who participated, but it goes out to the principals also of District Four, Principal Hargreaves of Floyd Middle School, Principal Ridgeway of Hollydale, thank you so much. Some of these students actually shouted out their principals in their contest, which lets me know their environments are ones that recognize that this could be an issue, but support students in being able to address it. And that goes a long way when it starts from the top. Also want to thank teachers, Vivian, and I hope I'm pronouncing, I don't see my teacher up here. Are you going to take pictures? Okay, you're welcome to join us. And also Tiffany Burns, or Teacher Burns, excuse me. Is she up here? And I keep missing you, because you look like a student. That's a blessing. Yes. Want to thank you for your support in getting these students ready for tonight's competition. Certainly want to thank Arcadis, which is a global design, engineering, and management consulting company for sponsoring the reception and providing gift cards. Events like this could not be possible without their sponsorship. I'm also appreciative of our partnership with Cool Kids Committee Incorporated and the assistance of their executive director, Dolores Powell, who was honored at this year's two thousand and nineteen NAACP Dinner for her efforts in the community. Not here with us tonight, but I want to recognize Barbara Carrington for Telecom Professionals for Social Responsibility, and thank you to Andrea Ashmore on my staff for coordinating the contest and reception. You did a great job. And I most certainly want to thank the parents. You know, I believe that great character starts in the home, and you certainly have been pouring into these young men and women for them to have been touched enough and thoughtful enough to engage in this competition the way that they did. As a county, we're not always thinking about today, but we're thinking about tomorrow, and I can't tell you how comforted I feel in our future. It looks bright when I know we have young people like this in our community. So I want to thank you. We're not going to go through the task of reading all of our essays, but if I can have our essay winners, just step forward so we can recognize you. They are from Floyd Middle School. First place, we have Carmaya Farley. Second place, Ms. Jasmine Williams. Third place, Jennifer Sanchez. And did we have any honorable mention here? Come on up. Let's recognize you. Yes, we had Stephen Rafai, who did an excellent essay with Ms. Chloe Williams. So let's recognize them, and Principal Hargreaves, if you'd like to. I'm remiss. You know, as an elected official, you've got to make sure you recognize your dignitaries. And we have a dignitary from the Cobb County School Board who helped us review these essays in preparation for the competition and our poster boards, Mr. Brad Wheeler, if you can be recognized. Please come forward and let's get a picture. Yes, Mr. Wheeler. Yes, Principal Hargreaves will take a quick picture here. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, thank you, guys. You can all come back, come back. We're going to get one with everyone. Want to recognize our elementary school poster participants from Hollydale. Oh, Hollydale did a queen sweep. They sure did. Want to recognize first place, Buna. If you can come here and show us your poster board that he did so creatively, a lot of detail. They are members of a community, and he has phrases of them addressing bullying and what they're doing about it. Second place, we have Ms. Jasmine Williams. If you could show us your poster board. Excuse me, I'm sorry. We have Maria Nunez. I'm sorry, Maria. Can we see your poster board? Don't be shy. We did this already. Come on. This is the second run. She did a beautiful job. Third place, we don't have Miss Adori Jackson, but an honorable mention, we have Alondra Vicente. She had a sporting event tonight. But with us, we also have Brianna Lys Ramirez. If you can come up with your poster, who let us know she's only in the fourth grade and created that drawing. It's beautiful. And we also want to recognize Cody Flowers. Cody, are you still with us? Or did you have, he had to run out. But he was extremely creative on his board, which he made out of a pop tart box, and I have never seen anything like this. So wanted to make sure that he was recognized. So if we can have those that participated in supporting these children, take this next picture. I see a parent coming. Do you guys want to take pictures, parents? And last but not least, our winner for the high school video is Pebblebrook High School. If we can recognize you, if you could come forward. Yes, and I'm going to have you guys introduce yourselves before we take a picture.
Hello, I'm Vivian Terrio. I'm the video production teacher at Pebblebrook High School.
I'm Leah Cobrisson. I'm a senior.
I'm Emily Rodriguez. I'm a junior.
I'm Natasha Pyle. I'm also a senior.
I'm Angel Villanueva, and I'm also a senior.
I'm David Montez, and I'm a junior.
So we'll do a quick picture with this group. We actually have the video from Pebblebrook queued up that we'll watch before we all take a group picture.
These are the faces that can stop bullying. One of these students ages thirteen to fifteen experienced bullying. Sixty percent have experienced physical bullying. Twenty-eight percent have claimed to be bullied. Thirty percent have claimed to see bullying. Thirty percent has claimed to bully.
If you see it, speak up. Stand up and help those who need it.
Thank you, guys, for taking the time to do that. It takes a short clip, but it's a lot of work that goes into getting that short clip and a lot of different takes, so we look forward to seeing what kind of additional productions you're going to create out of Pebblebrook. But we want to thank you so much for your mindfulness, for stepping up and being leaders in your school, and again, we look forward to great things to come from your contributions to our society. We're here represented by some supporters of these students here, and I just want to give them a brief opportunity to share anything if you'd like. Anyone want to share anything? Yes, no? I see a hand. No?
Hello, I am, I teach at Hollydale Elementary School, and I get the opportunity to teach a class in character building, leadership, and social and emotional skills. And this is our second year participating in the No Bully Contest, and when I shared with the children that we were going to do it again this year, they were so excited. One of the things that we've been focusing on a lot is not only making them aware that they can be global leaders, but also servant leaders. And as servant leaders, it comes with a big heart and kindness, and bullying and kindness just don't go together. So we've been focusing a lot on helping them. I tell them they're going to be experts in how to not be a bully and prevent bullying and making sure that they're not bystanders, that they're upstanders, that if you see something, we what? Say something, and to not be afraid, and to just practice kindness with all things, whatever your personality type, whatever your leadership skill is, kindness and love is just at the heart of it all, and that has to be built first. So we are just honored to be able to be on a platform with such amazing schools and such amazing talent, and we know that in the end, that if we continue to cultivate our future right here, our world will be that much more wonderful, graceful, and peaceful. So we just thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Cupid. I'd like to thank everybody for participating in this and all the other kids that did this. There were some, a whole room full of these posters, and like I say, I'd like to commend y'all in like they're saying, carry on. Thank you.
All right, we'll huddle up for one last picture, guys, and then you guys, free
All right, thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. Public comment.
Chairman, there's no one signed up for public comment this evening.
Moving on. All right, so before we get into consent agenda, yesterday during executive session, the board heard a legal issue that we've agreed to put on consent today, so I'd like to make a motion. to make a motion that the board approve a settlement of a workers' compensation claim on behalf of Daniel Gardavel. Does it have a second discussion? Called a question? Passes five to zero. All right, so we're gonna scroll through the consent agendas, and just to give you some updates here, number eight was withdrawn during, withdrawn from consent yesterday, and then we revised items number seven, 10, and 15, and 20. So just to give you a brief idea what those changes were. On item number 10, we added some language to clarify the use of the cameras that we purchased using this grant, the cameras will be optimized to improve homeland security measures, prevent and respond to potential terrorism, and reduce criminal activity including gang and organized crime. Specific placement will be determined based on crime trends, large-scale public events, specific threats, and case-specific investigative needs. In the case of number 15, we changed the district from District 3 to District 2, that was incorrect. And on item number 15, there was a date that was incorrect, we said that the Board of Commissioners met, the regular meeting would be on October 8th, whereas the regular meeting was on November 12th of 2019, not on October 8th. We had the wrong month and date in there, okay? So that, we scrolled, all right, with that, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as revised and authorized the execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Second, a discussion, called a question? Passes five to zero. All right, on to Regular.
We have four items for consideration. The first item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Chatfield Contracting Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $174,406 for drainage system repairs on Ridgewood Creek Drive.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, called a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. My second item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners determine that circumstances are such that it is necessary to proceed with condemnation proceedings by declaration of taking under OCGA 32-3-4, authorize the commencement of condemnation proceedings on one parcel on Woodland Brook Drive over Gilmore Creek, and adopt a resolution and order in form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the county attorney's office, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, Commissioner, thought.
So moved.
Discussion, called a question? Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve change order number one to resurfacing contract 2019-3 Local Roads North with C.W. Matthews Contracting Company, a no-cost time extension through June 30th, 2020 for resurfacing of county maintained streets.
Commissioner Campbell.
So moved.
Discussion, called a question? Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. And then the last item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve the First Amendment to the Transit Systems Award Agreement with First Transit, Inc., regarding on-time performance standards assessments of penalties for failure to meet established standards and certain maintenance obligations associated with 19 CobbLink Express Service commuter buses, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents in a form substantially similar to the attached and is approved by the county attorney's office.
Commissioner Otte.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, called a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Erica. And now we're on to public services, and the first one is parks.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Our item this evening is for the board to approve a contract with the Surface Masters Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $192,400 to rehabilitate the parking lots at Mud Creek Soccer Complex and Hubert Soccer Complex to improve stormwater conveyance under the 2016 Parks Floss Program. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the contract, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Campbell.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, called a question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. And for those who are watching from home, we withdrew item number 26. All right, the last business is to make a motion to approve the reappointments of Neil Warren and Roger Tutterell to the Board of Trustees for the Cobb County Employees Pension Plan. All right, discussion, called a question? Passes five to zero, and we withdrew number 28 also. All right, with that, I'll start with Commissioner Otte.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First thing, William, are you here for communications or sit in the community? All right, so he just has to take notes, didn't have to ask a question. All right, so my first announcement, William's going, oh my gosh. Dad was going, oh, I'm gonna love it. All right, so the first announcement is that I have just put out on the web and podcast a revamp of Two Talk with Bob Otte, we've changed it from video to podcasts. The first series of five is on public safety, you can get them on Apple Podcasts or the county webpage, and there'll be links on my newsletter. So then the last thing was the night before Christmas, oh, wait a minute, I'm ahead of myself. While you're basting your turkey, preparing your pies, and getting your Thanksgiving menu together, it may occur to you that Thanksgiving is a little later than usual this year, and I got a little confused. So, and you're, you'd be right, after all, what day is Thanksgiving? It's always Googled around this time of year. As it turns out, there's a reason the holiday is arriving a little on the tardier side, and it's downright historic. In fact, the story dates all the way back to 1939 when Franklin Roosevelt decided to shake up the tradition a bit in the name of capitalism. Thanksgiving had been celebrated on the last Thursday of the month since the time of Abraham Lincoln, but according to Time Magazine during 1939, the calendar had been unusual as the month started on a Wednesday, so there were five Thursdays as opposed to four. To restore some order, Roosevelt moved the national holiday to the second to last Thursday of the month, a change that many were unhappy with. Instead of focusing on the negative, Roosevelt attempted to justify his decision with a pro-shopping response, and you saw we recognized that day. Merchants would now have a holiday further from Christmas to allow for more shopping time. In a way, this birthed a consumer craze known as Black Friday nearly 80 years ago. The following year, 1940, the change stuck as the second to last Thursday was declared the, November 21st was declared the official Thanksgiving Day. In 1941, he reportedly admitted this, which was a mistake, but because the calendars were already printed with the third Thursday as Thanksgiving Day, it was too late to go back. Now moving on to the Christmas events around the district, the tree lighting at the Battery is on November 23rd at 7:00 PM. The holiday tree lighting and Santa's arrival at East Cobb Park, or I'm sorry, the avenues of East Cobb is November 29th from 3:00 to 7:00. The tree lighting at East Cobb Park is December 8th from 5:00 to 7:00, and I know Santa Claus comes to that. And you can join the Marietta Pops Orchestra at the Jenny T. Anderson Theater at Cobb Civic Center for another great holiday concert. There's two, one on Friday, December 6th, and the other is on Friday, December 13th from 7:30 to 9:30. The one on the 6th is at the First Baptist Church. And with that, happy Thanksgiving to all and to all a good night.
Follow that one.
Yeah, really. It's always a great day to not only thank our veterans, which was Veterans Day, but also our pet adoptions that are free at Cobb County Animal Shelter for any of our veterans. So this weekend, Ms. Horn, a four-year veteran of the U.S. Air Force, is our hero once again. She gave a homeless pet a forever home and has a forever friend. Thank you for your service, Ms. Horn. And if you didn't notice, go back, Brad, that's a beagle. I have two at home. We also had another Air Force veteran adopt through the Superior Pets for Patriotic Vets Program. Thank you for your 25 years of service to our country. Thank you to you and your family for adopting these two sisters. Thank you to Superior Plumbing for your generosity, and thank you to Cobb County Animal Services for your compassion. November 20th, the next Veterans Connection Meeting will feature Bernard King, he's the Public Programs Coordinator of Cobb's Energy Management Agency. He is integral to the Community Emergency Response Team, our CERT program, where attendees learn how to help their communities in case of a natural disaster. Hear from him and connect with local veterans on Wednesday, November 20th, tomorrow, 10:00 AM, at the East Cobb Senior Center, 3332 Sandy Plains Road. Also, November 22nd, the American Legion Oratorical Scholarship Program from American Legion Post 29. The deadline is tomorrow, is the 22nd, I'm sorry, Thursday, Friday, for, to enter for high school and homeschooled students in the Marietta, Kennesaw, and Acworth area. You can email roy@roylance.com or visit www.legion.org/oratorical. And from now until November 30th, you can take home your forever friend for just $20. Cat or dog adoption from the Cobb County Animal Shelter, the dog or cat must be at least one year old, and $20 adoptions through the end of the month, free for veterans, but $20 for citizens. The cats and dogs come fully vetted, all their shots, their spade are neutered, and they're microchipped. It's a good deal. And the Art Place at Mountain View is inviting you to enjoy a 20-minute version of Frozen, the musical presented by From the Top Theatrics in the Art Place's Black Box Theater. The show will be Saturday, December 7th, two showings, 11 to 1, or 2 to 4. Tickets are only $15, and you can visit artplacemarietta.org for more information. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving next week. We have a lot to be grateful for, and I hope you all enjoy your blessings with your family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I was making sure. Several months ago, we announced that All-in-One Roof Solution, or All Roof Solutions, I'm sorry, was doing a roof for a veteran, and on Friday, they announced who the 2019 Veteran Roof Giveaway winner was, and that was Shanna Godfrey-Cato. And we would like to thank all the nominees for their service, and thank you to everyone who voted for the candidates, and they are looking forward to doing this again in 2020, and we have a video to show.
Good.
The veterans that worked for us all got together, and they too loved your story and wanted to be a part of blessing your family, so we are gonna put a new roof on your home.
Wow, thank you.
So we are very excited to do that.
Amazing, thank you so much.
And we have a small gift basket to go along with that.
Thank you.
Some balloons for the girls.
You're welcome.
So my husband spent six years active duty in the Air Force, deployed for almost two years to Iraq, and then I joined the National Guard about nine and a half years ago, and also will be deploying in the next couple of weeks to the Middle East myself, so it's amazing for someone to think of you, especially at this time when we have so much going on. It really means a lot to us that you guys are thinking of us, and that people are here to support us through everything we're going through, so appreciate it.
So we're here with the Cato family, just got the opportunity to let them know that they are the winners of this year's Veteran Roof Giveaway. Mr. Cato served for six years in the Air Force, and Ms. Cato is actually getting ready to deploy again to the Middle East. So this will be one less thing that she has to worry about while she's away from her family, protecting this country and allowing us to enjoy all the freedoms that we get to enjoy. I want to just thank everybody for voting for these families, also for making all the submissions. We're gonna be able to do this again next year, and so hope to have even more veterans to bless next year.
Thank you, William. Good job.
So again, thank you All Roof Solutions for making Veterans Day. Then also tomorrow, from 5:00 to 8:00 PM, we're gonna have Zaxby's Cops Chickens and Kids, and this will be at the Zaxby's on Dallas Highway in the Old Village Trade Shopping Center, and with that, happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, we're gonna be holding our second annual resolution run on Saturday, January 4th, 2020. Just asking for you to save the date, it will be held at the Riverside Epicenter in Also want to encourage people to sign up for Cobb 101. Am I losing track of the number of classes? Is this gonna be the third class?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, staff has just done an amazing job of organizing this every year and helping to educate residents all across the county about our processes, and it actually ends up in creating great partnership with those that live here and work here, so that we are not operating in a bubble, but that citizens are very much aware of how we work together as a county to provide great service. So please apply, the deadline is December 2nd, and you can do that online at cobbcounty.org/cobb101. And lastly, want to recognize parks and recreation and public services for your participation and our ribbon cutting this past weekend at our all-inclusive playground at the Wendy Hill Community Center. These are just a few of the beautiful pictures that were taken on a beautiful Saturday, and Chairman Boyes and Commissioner Campbell were present, and many members of the community to, to open the site, and the pictures, I can say, just do not do this facility justice. It is just absolutely beautiful. The event started at 1:00, and my children did not leave that playground until 4:00 PM. So, as I say, I'm sure this is a amenity that many families can enjoy in Cobb County for years to come, and particularly want to thank Jimmy and your team for having the foresight to do this here at the site, considering the therapeutic, excuse me, therapeutic programs that we have here, I know it's gonna be appreciated by the families and patrons of the Wendy Hill Community Center. With that, I just have some remarks to make. Today is a unique day for us, as we're having a BLC meeting on the day of zoning, and there was a case that came before us, which was SLEP 16, which is a special land use permit that did not have opportunity to be heard by the public. And it was a frustrating day for citizens of District 4 that have been working diligently to bring up their concerns to commissioners via email, through phone calls, they're attending community zoning meetings, and many of them taking time off of work to be here during the day, to not have an opportunity to speak due to how things transpired. And even though they did not have opportunity to share what their concerns were for their community, as their commissioner, I'm going to share concerns about that process during the final moments of my remarks today. Back in August of this year, Baldwin Paving applied for a special land use permit to, to operate a crusher-run operation in the district. This site is located immediately adjacent to residential property. I did not hear from Baldwin Paving about them wanting to continue this case and not to have a zoning hearing until November 18th, although this case was to be heard today. My office had reached out to Baldwin Paving to have a meeting about this use, of which they already told us they spoke to commissioners and were gonna get a continuance, even though they did not speak to the district commissioner of where they were seeking the permit. I had the ability to speak to the property owner of this site to let them know that there were several concerns by residents about this use being put adjacent to homes. there were several concerns by residents about this use being put adjacent to homes and that we would not continue this case today, that we would actually hear it. However, at the hearing, things did not transpire as stated. As opposed to the district commissioner having the opportunity to have this case heard and to be able to make a motion on behalf of the residents, District 4 residents got to hear another district commissioner move for this case to be withdrawn without prejudice, which not only meant that the case was not heard, but that applicant would have the ability to come back before this board at any time to ask for the same permit. This action frustrated not only me, but the residents who are here that have to, that have been living with this use nearby. How did we even get to hear about this use and how did it come before us for zoning? There was another zoning case in the area to park over 100 trucks next to residential. And the community, when I went out to speak with them, expressed some concerns. I saw a grandmother out in her front yard with her grandchildren and I talked to her about that use of the truck parking facility. And she said, "Well, I know there's some concerns about that, but let me tell you what I'm more concerned about. I'm concerned about all the noise I'm hearing down the street and I am concerned about all the dust and all the noise and all the trucks and I don't know if anybody can do anything about it." When I came back to the county, I reached out to code enforcement for them to investigate what was going on because I saw activity that just seemed out of place. Code enforcement went out to the site and saw there was indeed a crusher-run operation occurring. They stated that the crusher-run operation was not authorized. And this was frustrating for me to know that the applicant who gets significant dollars, tax dollars of Cobb County money into the millions, does not know simple processes when it comes to operating in accordance to Cobb County ordinances. It also bothers me for them to receive the amount of money that they've received, for them to think that they can circumvent those that lead in the community where they're operating and talk to other board members and not have, and not have a meeting with those that live in the area and lead in that area. But there's greater issues at play because now we did not just move from a concern and a challenge with the business owner, but now with the board. By the community not being able to speak today, we undermine transparency. We did not give them an opportunity to speak about things going on in their community, not so it can be vetted from a zoning perspective, but so it could also be vetted by a public forum. They did not have their say to speak about the next issue, which I believe has to do with equity. There are concerns that were heard in the meeting today where we deliberated and waxed long about putting commercial next to commercial and next to an interstate. We spent time addressing how we would address buffers of residential property next to residential property, but it was told that it certainly would not make any difference for these residents to come and speak about their matter today, even though we're looking at one of the most intense industrial uses of a crusher-run operation, operating at people's backyards with absolutely no buffer. Not only does this impact their welfare, does not only does this impact their property values, it impacts their health, as there is research that is showing that the silica that is produced by crusher-run operations can cause cancer. I have been a part of a sterogen of a matter regarding sterogenics in an adjacent district to help address with great sensitivity concerns that a community has about cancer-causing agents being emitted into their community. But this community did not have the ability to address this with the board today. Their concerns about their safety were addressed inequitably without them having a public forum to, to talk about that. And I am disappointed that the commissioner that leads that area did not address, did not treat those citizens as sensitively as I have treated his. There's also an issue of congeniality. I have never been in a meeting where the district commissioner did not have the ability to lead discussion on the merits of a matter in their district. While we may not agree and while we may not have the same decision on zoning, I did not have the opportunity to speak to the merits of a matter of a zoning case that impacts the health, safety, and welfare of residents in Cobb County.
Oh, that's enough. That's enough.
In Cobb County today.
Ask her out, please.
There was not opportunity to address that today. It mars congeniality with a business, even though there was a tenuous and a controversial matter with the business. I wanted to let Baldwin Paving know in public that I was disappointed, yes, that they were operating this, but disappointed because Baldwin Paving has been a positive contributor to our district. One of the largest projects that they have provided in District 4 was the widening of lanes and the median installation on Floyd Road, which has changed the traffic patterns and improved traffic movement on that corridor. I wanted to let them know and at least have the ability to extend an olive leaf that there is an expectation and desire that we function better. But instead, without that opportunity to share that, we left here with greater controversy and even with the display showed here tonight, even more controversy than what should have been, just controversy based on the sole merits of a matter. I'm frustrated for the congeniality also of this board to residents. What happened today only reinforces the thought that this board does not care and regard the residents of District 4. When they are here and they sit and they watch matters being discussed of certainly have significance to residents with respect to their health, safety, and welfare, when they don't have the opportunity to address this board and are told that what they will share will not make a difference. Everything that I have worked hard for, for the past seven years, to try to dispel by working with these commissioners, by working and being an advocate, by showing we are a team, has been undermined and I cannot understand it. And it will, and it only reinforces the desire for cityhood in South Cobb when they feel like they do not have representation on this board. If there's any silver lining that was shared, I do feel that a comment made up here about code enforcement, for code enforcement to be able to apply a cease and desist to help them stop operating, although I've never heard of code enforcement engaging in a cease and desist action, that is something I think that's more in, in the legal realm. I do believe that that did give the community fodder, that they need to take legal action on what occurred. And they have the ability to file actions in equity to make sure that if the board did not give them opportunity for them to speak and, to speak so they can advocate for themselves in this forum, they can do so in another forum. I was told today that what I received should be good, that withdrawing the case will allow code enforcement to be able to do their work. Code enforcement has been working. Code enforcement always works. But regardless of the great efforts of code enforcement, code enforcement still has to run through a legal process, which unfortunately too many times can take years. Therefore, it was important for that community to have this public forum, if anything, to be able to apply some political and public pressure for this activity to stop and to form a question of why was this ever tolerated next to a residential in the first place when there were elected officials involved and when there is a company that gets significant work from this county. There's this other silver lining. Even though residents, who some of them do not have the same autonomy that a lot of us have to just take time off work and be paid for it, to take time off work and whatever they're doing and not face repercussions, they are now much more aware of how important it is to be engaged in the civic process. I hope that they realize, just as I realize, that we are a collective partnership in how we govern our county, that what took place today is, I hope, is not going to be the way that we continue to conduct business, is to see ourselves being apart from the citizens who we are called to lead, to getting called to lead. We all lead together and I want the residents of District 4 to know that I am advocating and leading and doing the best that I can on their behalf and will continue to do so. And I hope that they continue to do so by coming and doing their best to exercise their voice in this forum. Thank you.
Well, I was going to just wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, but I could not disagree with Commissioner Cupid more than what she did, said tonight. This board, if you go back and look at the record of this board, not only has it supported Commissioner Cupid on the vast majority of her efforts, but it's also supported the other commissioners on their efforts too. And while today, you know, was unfortunate in the way that we concluded the will of the board, it was a four to one, and there's always two sides to every story. So I'd encourage you to go back and watch the video this morning to see what transpired as that the person who was coming here for the SLEP, they also have their rights and as professional courtesy, this board has always in the past honored that if somebody wants to withdraw it, but there was an option to hold it, which allowed further discussion on this matter. In other words, letting the applicant get with the, the neighbors to see if there was something that could be worked out, which is what I have always emphasized in the middle of the road. But that wasn't an option that was supported this morning. So again, you know, it's politics, there's a lot of things that go into this, but I sincerely believe that this board as a whole has no particular animosity to any other district, any district in this county. I think our record is perfectly clear that in the, at least the three years that I've been the chairman, we have done a great job of supporting all the commissioners regardless of what their project is. And in those cases where we don't, we have a full informed discussion about it. And I just think that that should be the, instead of having one specific incident mark the characteristic of the board, we look at totality of our record. And if you do that, I'll think you'll see, you'll realize is that there's a reason Cobb County has a bright future is because in spite of our differences up here sometimes, we always find a way to move things forward. And, you know, and that has to be something that I believe that we should take, be grateful for this Thanksgiving, that we truly live still in a county where we can safely work, live, play, and pursue our dreams. And with that, I wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.